We're going to open it, we're going to reopen it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I answer your question, Mark? We don't have a motion till then. We're a little small town here. We'll see. Jim goes first. Of course, we're gonna pass the we're not, we're gonna bypass the assessment meeting right now, I think. Unless we want to open it just to table the
I make a motion.
Now we open the assessment meeting. Second. All in favor?
I'll make a motion, we table only abatement. Second.
All in favor?
I'll make a motion, we call it the abatement.
Second. All in favor? Okay. Now.
I make a motion, send the warrants.
All in favor?
This is efficient.
Okay.
We're here to work.
All in favor?
I was catching up with DDs and DWS and DDs.
And in fact, while the paperwork of the warrants are going around, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, so and
Second.
And approve the minutes of those here at the August sixteenth, twenty-four special, so
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, now. Jim.
Why don't you tab our liquor license?
Um, anything changed except the great food?
Did that come out right?
That is changed. Oh, I heard, I already heard sneak preview what's going in September. Sometimes I ask the
Yeah.
I was asking Sherry. Okay, if nothing's changed on the liquor license, uh, do we have a motion to
Should we approve the warranty panels?
All in favor? So this has to be blue if, Mark?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I'm a protestant.
Well, somebody has
Or he wouldn't give me that money from the bank.
Where?
Everyone here is
Okay, I know. What's that?
As Jim Perry said.
Good work. Someone caught it.
I just know from this point forward, I'm just gonna call you Paul. That's it. You put it on paper.
You can call me Jim, you can call me Paul, but you doesn't have to call me.
It doesn't look like, sometimes I call him.
So do you need it, you can get it tomorrow morning, coffee, uh, mid-coffee, so you need it right now?
I can get it tomorrow morning.
Then before we lock the door, you are
God bless. Appreciate it.
Or you can sit another minute if you want.
No, I, I have, I have unbelievable pride. I'm sorry, you don't have a reservation. I haven't got a seat for you tonight.
Show me.
We're, we have a medical group there and I do
Uh?
We do a lot now.
You're back.
You are fine, sir?
Sorry, I was in the middle.
See you, Jim.
Okay, I think we're gonna go back to the town hold update and Dan, were you gonna do that?
Sure. I guess where I was going was that along the same lines of moving things around, we have the members of the public here talk about something on the agenda.
Well, because I don't feel that, um, that if the members of the public want to talk about something, they should be put on the agenda. If they want to talk something, well, then it should be talked about when that agenda item comes up.
Similar to the liquor license.
Yes. Is there someone that you want, do you want to move an agenda item up or someone's here?
My original
Are you talking about Dan DeLuppa?
Yeah.
Oh, well, you know, I don't know if you noticed, but I was on the original committee and I was on the seven years.
Good.
Marathon committee. At Addison section.
Well, no, and that's what I guess I was saying before we get back to talking about things that Dan may, or other people may want.
Right, I'm here later. I, I have no problem moving Dan DeLuppa up because I'd love to talk about something happy.
Well, and that's exactly it.
Yes, I worked with John Huff for years.
Great.
Started from the very beginning.
Nice. Long story short is I coincidentally ran into Dan and his wife on an island out in the Bay of Miami.
Cool.
Didn't know. We got talking and he said that he had been trying to put feelers up to get the marathon up and running. And I said, well, maybe I can get you on the board meeting to gauge our interest and see what we can do to help him where you are. So that's your introduction.
Thank you so much. And I'm a good friend of Patsy's.
We won't hold that against you.
I try to be.
My neighbor on South Levek Road, I live on, I live on South Levek Road and Patsy's right across the way from me, so. Yeah, thank you for having me tonight and congratulations to the new members. I understand they're in the West Coast. So congratulations. Uh, yeah. I live in Levek. I, I'm a teacher. My wife is the, uh, social worker at the school. I'm a teacher to death and a sign language interpreter. And, uh, for the past few years, I've been looking at the website, uh, hoping that the marathon was going to be coming back. And as we know, each year it said, oh, sorry, that's a COVID. Sorry, we don't have a race director. John Huff moved back to Scotland and retired, so. Um, I said, oh, that would be a shame to have it just go by the wayside because it's such a very bad, very positive, a lot of um, economy, I guess, to Levek and people had very positive experiences from it from what I have heard. Uh, so I started to put my feelers out and met up with Maureen a few times and she introduced me to John. John and I have been having Zoom conversations. And I met with some of the key folks like Eric Morissette and Paul Roach and Angela over in Tempebella and met with both in the border agencies. And everyone seems to be, you know, positive about it and looking forward to restarting it. Uh, of course, it's a tremendous amount of work, as you know. And I'm not a race director, although I'm currently taking the race director certification course to kind of learn what I don't know. Uh, but I would like to see it come back. Um, when I spoke with Maureen, it was just on the verge of kind of like shutting the whole thing down and donating whatever money they had back to charity. So it was kind of like opportunistic. It was the eleventh hour. And I said, well, you know, I'd, I'd like to at least take a look at the possibility of bringing it back. I have made some progress in addition to the meetings. Uh, with John's help, we've, uh, secured race roster, which is the online registration platform. So they're, they're set to go and the timing company, which is Atlantic Ship Timing from Halifax. They've worked with the marathon in the past, so they're ready to go. Also, Raffi Hopkins, I don't know if you know him, uh, he lives in Trescaut. His wife works at the Cops with Institute. He's a web designer and IT guy, uh, and he's agreed to, uh, do like a brand refresh and reset up the website. So we have some key people in place, but of course, there's still a lot of pieces that are question marks, like you know, like you need a medical coordinator, a safety coordinator, uh, farmer's transportation on both sides and fire EMT on both sides. But there's still quite a bit of work to do and volunteers, of course, um, and all that planning that goes with it. So, um, we're making a, we're making some progress, but I can't say that it's like a done deal for twenty twenty-five. We were shooting, it's been traditionally like that third week in June. Uh, or the, the past seven years was that third week in June, like the twenty-third. And I learned that the Down East Pride is the last week, I thought it was the third, but I guess it's the last weekend in June of twenty-five. But I thought there was a conflict, but it turns out I guess there is not a conflict now for Down East Pride. So we could, if we could get our ducks in line, theoretically have it that last, well, not the last, I guess there's five, this, this is a little bit confusing because there's five Sundays in June in twenty twenty-five, so it's the fourth, but it's not the last Sunday, June, uh, the twenty, twenty, twenty-nine? Yeah, so I just
You know, that, that, that has to be the last of twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine?
Well, it's not the last, it's the second to last.
Okay, so that's the pride. That's the pride.
Second to last is what he's saying.
Yeah, so what I, what I would report is second to last, yeah.
Twenty-second.
Yeah, because I don't think it would be a good idea to have it the same weekend as Pride, right?
It's the twenty-second.
Yeah.
June twenty-second. Well, um.
I spoke with the, with, um, the director of the Boston Marathon and he was like, well, you know, maybe you could team up with Pride, but you know, not, not, he's from Boston, of course, not knowing, moved back to the small-town communities. I don't think we want to have it both at the same weekend, right? It's not, not feasible. Yeah, so we could, if we get our act together and a lot of things happen, we could theoretically have it that next-to-last weekend, Sunday. John always said it on Sunday. So the runners will be around on Friday and either give a match or a Saturday.
Yeah, it was on Sunday because there wasn't buses and some buses wasn't buses or anything, but, um.
Yeah. So I think what I'm needing at this point is like, pretty much like a, a, a committee, you know, just a small number of folks that can act as like liaisons between the communities in terms of, um, like the DOT, that's sort of out of my, out of my wheelhouse, and also like safety and security, EMT, police, fire, that kind of thing. Uh, logistics, medical logistics, all those types of things. I need like a committee that will have folks that will go kind of set up the framework for each of those big-ticket items.
Do you, do we know who used to chair this or head this up?
Uh, the director was John Huff. Yeah, he did it for seven years and he has retired and moved back home to Scotland.
Oh, jeez.
He was available too much.
That's what I'm saying. Can we not lean on him for a lot of this? You don't have to rewrite it all?
Yeah. We can lean on him, but you know, he's in Scotland and he's willing to like help out.
Our whole fire department helped. I actually, I actually did security on Water Street.
You were
Medical Center, were they the
Yeah, the Medical Center helped us.
Were they historically the medical
Yes.
Like, are they, anybody?
They had the first name in the library.
Oh, right, right, right.
Staffed by, I guess, uh, some medical people from Metropolis.
Yep, I do remember they were out, right, right.
So I was thinking maybe, maybe getting somebody from the Medical Center to be like the medical director and then that person can set up a framework either at the library or at Stockton Park, wherever we're gonna have it finished at. There's some issue of not finishing on Water Street.
I'm pretty sure that Lance might be, and some of the people at Lance might be willing to help Stockton, but the marathon, do you think that would be something that they'd be interested in?
Well, I, I, I
We had entertainment, yes.
Well, yeah, and I'm just
We had bands.
I'm thinking historically, I, I mean, I know, um, you know, some people who were on the committee, you know, you've met Maureen, I knew
Rachel was having volunteers for like years.
You know, so that, right. Then, you know, those people are all, I would hope, resources that can answer those kind of questions around that stuff, or at least be able to tell you who did that in the previous, you know, many years of successful marathon.
I kind of know the silos, you know, from John and Maureen and these folks.
Right.
Now it's, next level is like, okay, now like identifying a person who's actually gonna be the medical director and like set up medical infrastructure and safety coordinator and set up safety instructor, that kind of thing. I kind of know the big-ticket items, but how do you like person power, people that are willing to, to take on some of the roles? So I'm just throwing it out there and we're making progress, like getting some infrastructure set up, but I'm not convinced that we'll, we'll be ready by spring of twenty-five, to tell you the truth. You know, it's coming pretty quick and I don't know if we might be better off to like say fall of twenty-five or spring of twenty-six, so maybe we can work on like getting some sponsors or, you know, really try to do it, do it well, rather than kind of rush it. Yeah, from your experience, you think it's getting to be too late or you think we can swing it?
Well, depending on the path, based on the timing of the Boston Marathon.
Hmm.
And it was, actually, the race was set up to be a Boston qualifier.
Yes.
And, and that was after the, that unfortunately was under attack, but they very quickly got set up to do it down there. Um, you might also talk to the people with the Roosevelt Park.
I have, I forgot to mention that.
Okay.
I did speak with John Southern and, uh, Mr. Thompson, Bruce Thompson, and they're, they have, uh, a lot of, uh, the, the marathon equipment. They have it housed in that, uh, that area in the back there and they're, they're, you know, very, John's very supportive and very willing to provide the volunteers.
Equipment in public places. I think it all depends, to answer your question, is if you can do a half marathon, full marathon, all this, you know, ten K, that's a lot. I think if you were just just to stick to one kind of marathon, you'd be able to do it.
Yeah.
But it got very complicated with the different routes.
Yes.
And where the, uh, starts, the starting lines, the finishing lines.
Yeah.
I think the first year, we just had a marathon.
Right.
That's correct. The, the half marathon was added to Southern
Was added, added and the ten K. All of that was added later.
We did do that in phases.
Just did the marathon. I think you'd have great interest and needed this little one mile thing for the little kids.
Yeah.
Which I managed to do with that.
No, I think that's a great idea. If we could just focus on the marathon and then add to it next year, once we get our feet wet.
Yeah, because it brings enough people. The marathon itself is fa- fantastic to go from one, went from White House to White House, which I thought was and you can get that route from John.
Yeah.
He has to have those routes, the routes that's
And I have JD's book.
I can read the guy's book, but we can read the exact route.
Yeah. John.
Well, economic development.
Yeah.
Well, that's, well, yeah, no, that's what we
So I'm just thinking that you just got nominated for, you know, appointed for economic development book.
Yeah, darn.
And then, and I think it's a fantastic idea. Fantastic idea to do the marathon.
Well, you know, it's, it's about the plot. It's a little thing, but it brings in good minds for people.
Great thing. It's international.
Do you have committee member commitment?
I have Maureen, I have Dr. Maureen.
She's a wonderful woman, isn't she?
She's, there's the whole refreshment tent thing.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, like, because there was like a group of
Yeah.
ten people that, you know, met on other sides of the bridge once or twice a month
Right.
for a year before, you know what I mean? That like, that's why I'm curious, you know, as much as supportive historically as the select board in the towns, where it was the marathon committee
Yeah, they had their own one.
that does it.
Yeah, it was, right, and we volunteered. We shut the streets down, we got everybody off Water Street the night before. There were things that we had to agree to, which John Huff came to the committee and asked, but then the rest of it was
The committee.
And I also want to speak with this gentleman here.
His head of public works, right.
Well, the way they worked it before, all the parking was at the school. You couldn't park them in cars at the White House.
Right.
So they were using the school buses.
Yes, it's a school.
And according to John, that was quite a
Coordination.
nut to crack. The school buses, the West Quanti.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's all doable.
Details.
Details, details.
But no, luckily Maureen had to go off or else I'd have talked to her.
Yeah, I would, I would see that as your biggest, you need to have a solid committee commitment.
I think we need to make a motion as, as a select board to support the endeavor of starting an international marathon again.
And I, and I don't mind reaching out to public safety EMS and or DOT, any of the
Do you want to be a second?
Be a second? Good.
All in favor?
I think it's a great idea.
So you have the town supporting it?
We'll
I'd be like to help in any way.
That's it. We, we can speak.
Don't mind if I come to you.
Yep.
I'll keep it posted as the weeks and months go on, I'll keep it posted.
I will reach out to the three people, public safety, EMS, and DOT and give them the date. So they've got it nine or ten months ahead of time.
Twenty-third?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second is a Sunday, right? Twenty-ninth is the next Sunday, yeah.
So that's, that's
I'll reach out to them and, and get that on their radar and say, listen, we're gonna have some meetings, we want you to come. I'll let you know when it is.
Oh, thank you. To do the, to do the, to do the, uh
Just for more room, station, for more room.
They're saying we could use the, uh, farmer's market section for the, because I know where they timed the, the finishing line was right there across from that shelter.
Yeah.
I mean, they had it all marked out. It was exactly the twenty-six mile.
I talked to Maureen about that property there and the foundation that there as well could be utilized.
Yes, because we needed a medical tent.
Maureen was mentioning that, you know, as you're going, as you're looking north on Water Street, that empty lot on the right where people would congregate, there might be an issue with the owners of that.
Well, that's
Nobody owned.
So If it were, you can go left, is what I'm saying.
He's saying he can, he's gonna give you the other side of the street because they own that, right?
So where the farmer's market is, there's a foundation, I can talk to the owners who own part of the field as well.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, instead of the finishing people in the left will be on the right.
If that becomes an issue, I don't think she knew if that was.
Yeah, she wasn't quite sure. I'm not, I'm not sure how to find out if that would be an issue, because if it is an issue, uh, you know, it'd be hard to keep people out of that lot, right, on Sunday when people are finishing and people are milling around. I mean, people are gonna go
I think you're getting down to my new details that are all gonna work out and we have eleven things on our agenda.
Okay, sorry. I'll zip it and appreciate your
Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Thanks, Dan.
Start with the one and work to the half at next year.
All right, yeah, thank you for entertaining the idea.
No, thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Very cool.
And as we sit in the ward, I can through the gallery.
And now I'm gonna go to the chess club.
Well, I knew you were down there, that's why I was trying to get you.
The library.
Okay.
Thank you. Pleasure meeting you. Maybe if you have a booth or a car or I can check your name.
You can see me all over town.
Yeah.
Just help me out.
Tell me your, uh, digits.
Yeah, I should have said, uh,
I did see you all the time.
I should have said Carol, maybe, he was supposed to be at the chess club to help them, came up to do this.
Oh, oh, why? Oh, no.
That's why I was trying to get him.
Oh, okay.
My originally job is Okay.
Okay, we're back to town pit update, Mark.
You are.
So.
Oh, it's, it's town pit.
It's, yeah, Dan's doing business. Start.
Oh, so we had a follow-up, what, Zoom, and then a follow-up email from the state, uh, EDP. And more or less, my understanding is pissed off, um, unless, unless we decide to buy a half a million dollar grinder. Or if we can find this altruistic landscape company that wants to lend us their chipper grinder a couple of times a year.
Oh, one of the towns that I wrote that from the, the email you sent me, that if we had a big enough piece of town property with, what, it was five hundred feet away from the closest and a hundred feet away from something else.
Yeah, there's another option, which would be another piece of property that you could still bring yard debris to, but then you still have to
Still have to
Chip it, grind it.
Yeah.
Get rid of it. They
What concerns me about that when it's so close to
Yeah, but
So close to the ocean.
I mean, I put it back to them. I mean, I more or less said, people in town here, they're just in burn.
But they, that is an option, though.
Well, it is, and it's, it's somewhat hypocritical, because at the same time, there's forty young carcinogens in wood that's now going into the air, but you're not okay with it biodegrading on the ground. I'm just confused. Any lame politics? They said, well, the people of Maine aren't gonna go without having a fire outside any time of the year. So I said, okay. So I said, we're
Now, like, that's true.
We're impoverished town. I said, we don't have a great deal of funds. And I said, we don't certainly have five hundred thousand dollars to buy a grinder. So it's not an option. It's a non-starter. So they really haven't given us many options. Do you have another thinking?
I mean, it's not, because I mean, it was more or less to the point that the gravel pit's done.
Yep.
That it's not going to reel.
No.
So why don't we sell the gravel pit for five hundred thousand dollars and buy a grinder? Prime property.
I mean, there might be some settling.
Just a little bit.
There's plans, there's plans there.
Are, are brush piles illegal? No. So we're gonna see a return to backyard brush piles?
A hundred percent. Yep, and Bobby is gonna be writing a lot of fire comments.
Well, that's if they decide to burn your brush pile. Well, I'm just saying that if you
Mary takes for a long take.
If you have to burn up a tree that fell down on your property or, or get rid of it, you're gonna put it in a pile. Most people probably don't want the responsibility of burning it for numerous reasons, and so there's nothing wrong with a brush pile. That's gonna be the option.
You mean, a, a community, a community brush pile you're talking about?
No, it's private property.
Each homeowner somewhere has a leaf dump or a little brush pile where they clean up the branches that come down from a windstorm.
Talking about, you know, in the center of town, there's a lot of winds, so I
Look, we don't have any kids to get rid of our brush cleanups. It's the only option that sensible people are gonna exercise.
Yeah, and that was, and that was my point to him, is you're leaving us very no, very little option here.
I see one.
Yeah. No, I do too.
Brush pile.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna go to town administrator report.
There's nothing to do. Um, I went to a management conference last week and we gained some insight on that we're not the only small town trying to fill positions like, you know, the full assessor, plumber inspector and stuff like that. And, um, some of the other small towns have worked with their county managers, um, down south, and they've actually had a full-time job for like those positions. Um, it may be a spike then for us, but it gives that person a full-time job because of all the other towns that contribute. And they see, at first, it's kind of a little bumpy to get it all worked out, but once it's worked out, they said it's the best thing they could ever do. Um, hopefully, Dicky and I will be getting done with FEMA this week or next, and then we've done our part and it's all up to them after that, hopefully. And note, there is a rabies clinic I saw on Facebook that will be in Gouldborough, uh, October seventeenth. I'm, it's posted on my account, on Facebook page. Uh, ten dollars for dogs and twenty dollars for cats.
Is there a monetary criteria for that too, or income criteria?
I don't think so. I think it's just anybody.
Oh, okay.
And ten dollars for a dog is really
Several hundred dollars cheaper than that.
Yes, yes.
Very good.
So if anybody can go, it's, I think, uh, three to five thirty that day. And though it's an inconvenient time, but I saw it and figured I'd put it up there.
Thank you very much. So, uh, I think we're down to parking signs. I believe that has to do with the public parking behind the library. It came to our attention that really you can't see the signs. They need to be bigger. It needs to say Town of Blueback Parking, Pre-parking or whatever with an arrow, and we're hoping that we can get a couple of bigger signs, at least not for this summer, for the spring.
And Dicky, you shot me those pics, but I think they're still too far from
Yeah, they're not the area.
People drive right
They need to be on Water Street.
Yeah, people drive right by it and park right on Pleasant Street or right on
It needs to be one this direction and one the other direction. The one on Pleasant, I think it's not, it's useless.
Can we re-purpose it?
I, I mean, I have no idea.
We could re-purpose that. If we could get, um, see, there's not, there's no, there's no sign coming from the water and the boat landing in, there's no public I think the sign is only coming from Washington Street, right?
Yeah.
So anyway, we need
It's really tough to see the one going, driving up Front Street. I do, uh, that one's me tired of seeing than the one on Pleasant Street, because you have to be looking.
But everybody goes down Water Street, it comes in.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, the one on
I see it, because I sneak down Pleasant Street every day.
Right, but what I'm saying is the one on Water Street really is obsolete from where it's at.
So I don't know much what we can do much this season, but maybe we make a motion that the town pays for a couple of new signs for the spring.
I'll make a motion.
I will start with that.
I'd like to see it be fit in with our, our winter plan of hiking, everything that we want to talk about this winter for the upcoming quarter.
Yes, all in favor? So we'll get with, uh, Dicky on size and maybe we get it put in a new place and a two-way, you know, a pole where it has one on one side and one on the other, so they get, it gets you from both directions. Okay, subject bids. This is for a private grant, I mean, it's not a public grant, but it's for a private individual.
Once we
Thanks, Cam.
If, once, if, uh, one's approved
Oh, yes.
Okay. If one is approved tonight, we have to submit to the EDP, but then to approve before we begin.
Okay. So this bid here is from Bradshaw and the Dick Goelbe System.
Who's Bradshaw, they're in here.
Oh, then who's it from? Justin Loring?
Oh, the music producer, yeah, Loring, Loring Construction.
Okay, look, so Loring Construction, eighteen thousand eight hundred. What's yours?
Ten eight, from Nick, Danny and Justin.
Danny and Justin.
Yeah, so this isn't an actual property yet? We're just saying, hey, it's a factory.
Frank, oh, I don't see. H and S Construction.
The fix, yes, it's Danny's.
Okay, that's great. Well, I make a motion, we accept that one. Ten thousand eight hundred.
Two thousand eight hundred.
What do you, what do you say?
Is that for a three-bedroom design or what is it? It seems kind of big for I don't know.
It has to be the same one.
It is the same one, they're the same package.
So it's a state program? They know how many bedrooms subject it is and they're just fitting that part?
Yes, actually, yeah, it's not a total, total part of it. The tax per actually fixed himself to getting by and for those people.
This is the, uh, this is not for the code, whatever.
And the state, this is state?
Yeah.
State, yes.
Every step of it has to be approved.
But we have to
Okay, motion to do this, yes?
Do you need a chance?
All in favor? Okay, the Safe Harbor Project. I spoke to Aurel the other day and apparently they're going to, they're being kind of pushed by Moran in, in, um, Washington to have the toll project turned over to the DOT by the Anderson cover. While he was telling me that updated, I need eight percent of the design is While he was telling me that update, that eighty, eighty percent of the designers done and been approved, they wanted permission from the town to use the red house. I leaned against that permission because of the deterioration of the roof, that it's very close to the construction area, and they wanted the DOT people to, they wanted to use it for an office and actually to stay there, and and I said, well, I'm willing to pay for, you know, the water and the septic and everything, no, it's in the town gonna do that, so. That, that house, historically, was purchased by the grant funds for the specific reason to attach the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot for the egress, and they didn't do that in their new design, so. What say you on giving them permission to use the red house, it says they're gonna save a hundred thousand dollars, but the project is up as a fifty dollar.
I mean, what, what's the estimated cost that we would get?
Well, we have to put in a roof, the roof, the shingles are coming off, you know, we probably have to do that anyway.
Is it on city?
I wouldn't want the liability, I told him, I felt that the town would have to have a release of liability, have the equipment running around all the time.
Yeah, I mean, one of the working, down the shore, with water, and this.
Well, that's probably not, first of all, the White House has been turned on about seven or eight years.
Hopefully, the line will also be.
And the owner is the one that.
I mean, I think if they do a waiver of release, right.
Well, and, and are we willing to put on a roof, because it may leave it down there.
Patch it as needed.
Yeah.
What?
Patch it as needed.
Did you see how many shingles are off of that?
I know, but that, just because one shingle's missing doesn't mean the roof is missing.
Not about twenty-five hundred, I mean, it's like, what, fifty shingle roof.
One of my initial thoughts is if they're saying they can save a hundred thousand dollars off the project, can they put eight thousand dollars in for the roof?
Well, that's my feeling, that's my feeling, my feeling.